Chuck, welcome to our meeting today. You're gonna stay with us the entire night, aren't you?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, good. It's good to have you. If you all don't know Chuck Cagle, this is, have been our go-to attorney for a long time. When Doris has special questions, you've worked with our system for a long time, haven't you?
Yes ma'am.
Do you want to tell us anything about your upbringing over in Sweetwater?
Well, the coach here is about to get it from me, but I'm a 1974 graduate of Sweetwater High School. And it's, I always tell everybody in my speech that I'm, at school board trainings, assemblies or law assemblies, or even when I talk school law, I work in the lecture center. I'm from Sweetwater, Tennessee, and I'm a proud resident, proud person of DeCrom, Sweetwater. And look forward to coming back over here one of these days and breathing clean air again. I've been displaced in Nashville, Tennessee for about thirty years. And I'm practicing law at Lewis Thomason, heading up the education law practice group there for twenty-seven years.
Well, it's good to have you here with us. Let me first explain before we get started with the workshop. We're gonna really try to follow Robert's Rules of Order. And Sandra has ordered everybody a copy of that, that you'll be getting. It hasn't come in yet, but this is kind of a, will help us move on with our board meetings and maybe not get bogged down with everybody talking at the same time. If you, we bring up a subject and you want to talk, then you take your cup and you put your flag out. That means you're gonna say, you have something to say about what we've got to do. And we'll go around the room. If there's only one flag up and nobody else wants to talk, that's fine. So, according to Robert's Rules of Order, everybody is supposed to have a chance to say something before the next person, before you talk again. So, if there's four flags out, blue flags, we'll let those people talk. If after the blue is talked, and you want to talk again, put your white flag out. If you've got something else to say, put that out. But according to Robert's Rules, discussion should be just a couple, you should talk just twice. Now, I'm sure we can break that rule if we need to. So, tonight, we're gonna practice with it, a little bit with our workshop. Tonight, we're gonna talk about attorneys. We all were here, well, most of us were here for the, a couple of weeks ago when everybody talked to us. And I'm just gonna open the floor up to what you all have to say and what you thought about. And we're just gonna have some good discussions, I hope. So, who wants to start?
I'd like to say something about the, I asked this question months ago. At what point did we, I'm in favor of Robert's Rules, but at what point did we adopt these? Because I asked this question months ago when I first started, and there was no policy. So, is it not correct for us to go through and adopt the policy before we start following the policy?
Well, Mr. Cagle, I'm gonna defer to him because with T S B A, typically, every board meeting, and I'm gonna defer to Mr. Cagle on this to talk through that for us.
So, let me just say, most of the boards that I advise in the state of Tennessee have a policy that says one of two things, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed. Or, the one, the policy that I actually advise is, and it actually encourages a little bit more discussion, that it matters with parliamentary procedure. If parliamentary procedure becomes an issue, then we'll follow Robert's Rules of Order, the most newly revised edition. So, you should have a policy that says too, now, but the group can elect to adopt Rules of Order. And certainly, Robert's Rules are there, Mason's Rules of Legislative Procedure are there, there's several others out there. You can do that informally, you can do it formally, but most school boards do have a policy that specifies that Robert's Rules will be followed.
They do have a policy. There is a policy about Robert's Rules of Order that has been adopted.
For years.
For the board, and Sandra's gonna look at that for us.
There's a policy manual.
I asked that question, I asked that question when we first started, and didn't get a response, so I didn't know.
I mean, if you don't mind.
You go with our head, sir.
Now, Ian Torres, he told me we did not adopt Robert's Rules. Because I called him about it.
Well, it's in our policy. I didn't know we had adopted either. I said, I always thought we went by the guidelines the best we could.
That's what I thought.
But I didn't know that was a true adoption. I myself didn't know that.
It's in our, I know I've read it in our policies, but I couldn't quote it.
I thought I read in the Tennessee School Board Association that you do follow Robert's Rules. You should have a policy that says that.
Well, when we, when Jane Harrow and I went two year, well, whenever Jane was, four years ago, I guess, we went to a day training over in Nashville for the chairman's workshop, and I went as vice chairman with us. And they gave us a book. It was a revised edition of Robert's Rules of Order. And it was sort of a condensed version. It said if you need more, it was a smaller book, but it kind of gave you the guidelines to go by. So, they wouldn't have given us that if they didn't expect us to use that, I don't think.
Would you buy it?
There's not one in your list, in your index list, that says Robert's Rules will be used. Your index is complete, and I looked at the duties of the, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm speaking without recognition, but I looked at the duties of the officers, and Robert's Rules is not listed in there. Now, by vote, you can adopt Robert's Rules of Order, if that's what the board wishes to do.
We can't do it at a workshop.
You can't do it at a workshop, that's correct.
We'll have to, I'll have to adapt the agenda for that. But I'm, I'm almost positive it's in our policy somewhere. I thought it was in 1.400, but it's not, and it ages me.
That's what I'm looking for, I think.
You show.
You've been here, do you ever remember us at, I don't remember us ever.
Well, anybody know who won last, in the, what's her name, Russell, Randy Bennett, what's her name?
Randall Bennett.
Randy Bennett went home once. Yeah, that's the guidelines you go by in Robert's Rules of Order.
But we never adopted one here. We always kind of semi-wind by.
Sort of like a gentleman's agreement.
Yeah, I guess that's what it was, and that's. Well, we get off key on about five minutes. Chasing rabbits and stuff like this, where you want to talk. Just taking care of people's business, you take care of people's business, and then we talk about that other stuff. And we interrupt, I mean, you know, just like on S Y S life, it's gonna be a good thing. Get a motion on the floor, and second, then that's when we discuss. People want to discuss when they read off the thing. When they read off the thing, nineteen, they said, they want to start discussing before they end it.
Well, we basically followed the basic, getting a motion, a second motion, the discussion. Wasn't there something along about the call to question? I mean, you've been on boards more than probably anybody in here. How is it you get the call to question, according to Robert's Rules?
Someone, well, for instance, for talking about painting this wall pink, we're having a discussion about that. And Don says, what he's literally doing is he knew you the previous question. And what, someone had to do a second that. Two-thirds of the people, what we're voting on now is to shut off debate about talking about the pink wall. Two-thirds have votes to do that. So, we're not really taking a vote about the pink wall, we're taking a vote about whether we.
Stop the discussion.
Stop the discussion.
Yeah, you ask the question.
When you ask the question, yeah.
Takes a second.
Okay, and then the other?
Then we vote, it's not a debate, we're just voting on whether to stop talking and, and vote on the pink wall.
So, in that case, does it have to be like, two-thirds? I mean, like, we'd have to have six of us saying yes, let's stop. Six out of nine, the majority?
Simple majority.
Or simple, is it simple, two-thirds?
Under Robert's Rules, the state, the state has a law, a statute that says that any vote that the board takes is by majority membership of the board. There's no authority in all, for the board to require a larger motion.
So, there's no stopping?
He just asked for Robert, yes, Robert's Rules doesn't give us that.
But the state trumps Robert's Rules.
Yes.
So, we're just saying, we got that five out of nine, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
So, maybe it's not in our policy. If we can't find it, I thought it was.
I think it's in it.
And it could have been that it was just a gentleman's agreement, because I think, Mr. Upton, are you saying that you've been on the board the probably the longest? So, have you gotten all ready?
We always went by it, but I mean, I've never read my policy.
And I've never seen it.
Semi-wind by.
Yeah.
Semi-wind by. We didn't follow all the rules, we semi-wind by. That's the only way, and then things go change.
That's what the terming to do, keep your plank in line. That's why we never get determined. Keep your plank in line, like you're supposed to do things. And feet on the hammer, and people popping out line, and they're going like it is. Most things we didn't do, I don't know where Miss Stein was on that. We'd ask for the question, but we never did second, and we didn't do that. We just asked the question, nobody didn't say nothing else. Second order, want to keep talking. But in this forum, if you want to keep talking, I mean, you, I mean, we wouldn't talk all night at that thing. So, you ask the question, you get a second, and then.
So, then we have to say, okay, then go on.
You're voting about what the voter.
Right, right.
And that's an absolute, once we've called the question, there's a few absolutes in Robert's Rules, isn't there?
That's a bold debate, yes.
Okay, right.
So. Chair, I have your, it's just a simple thing called Robert's Rules Cheat Sheet.
That's right.
It's got fifteen basic things. But I think if we go with these.
It will be okay.
It's gonna help us, but now, Sandra, if someone copied these and passed them out, and we decide we want to adopt something like this. I just think this is a very simple thing, it's not complicated, and I don't think it hinders discussion.
Well, I think what we're trying to get to is, we're just trying to become maybe a little more, not, somebody to say that board meeting is chaotic, or that board meeting didn't, you know, was crazy. And we're just trying to get this to move in a smoother, maybe a little more, a little more deformed, I don't know. But is she gonna copy that for us? And I think what we could do is we could add that to our consent, we could add it to our agenda tonight and say, do we want to adopt this? We can look at it and see.
Please understand, I'm not saying we should do that, I'm trying to dictate the board. That's just a simple thing I.
Well, we could even look at it tonight, and in the next board meeting, we could decide if we want to do that. How do y'all feel about that?
I think we need to adopt it. I mean, it's been, been tugging me that they tried to get us to do it before, and we just haven't did it, so.
I don't, has it come up before John?
We've brought this up plenty of times, but no one's ever adopted it, and you know, and we just, and the answer I always got, we semi-follow it, but I think it's a good thing to adopt.
I think it should probably adopt. I think we probably should just adopt it and follow it, and put one on their charger. Helping the chairman. Helping the chairman do it.
I was also thinking that, I think there was one in the, I mean, having to see where we go through, and you measure specific for your system, it tells you that Robert's Rules of Order is the one way you can, or the procedure or something. And you had to shoot that and put it in. That's what I'm thinking it used to be. Yeah, yeah.
So, is that something at one time, when a bunch of them would take it out?
And sign in the Robert's Rules of Orders. I sent me and listened to them, and they later talked about how, you know, schools need to adopt at T S B A, like.
Well, I know that when we went to the board's chairman workshop, that they gave us the book of it, and they suggested it, and I just thought that that was what we were supposed to do. Okay, let's study this, and at the next board meeting, we can decide we're gonna adopt Robert's Rules of Order. How about that?
And we've ordered books for everyone?
She's already ordered books for everybody.
And in the training, that was one of the things that we asked the, the meeting that you guys are going to have with Dr. Wilson from T S B A, that, I think that's one of the topics that she was gonna cover, I think it's one of the topics.
Okay. And that's scheduled for the twenty-third, was that wrong? Twenty-third. Can everybody come to that, the twenty-third? That's everybody? Do you wait, can you come right down?
Yeah, I haven't confirmed it, Sandra, though, yet, but I think it is.
Well, can you get off work, can you get off work?
Yes.
Good, good. Okay, with that being said, do you all want to try this tonight? See if we can.
How can we do that? We can't vote on that. We've been moving along at a pretty good rate, save a couple of nights. So, we can move along in the same fashion we've been, and do this, in my humble opinion.
What's the rest of your thing? John, what do you think?
I agree with John.
Just that, just moving on like we've been moving on. If we adopt something, we can pick up this flag so that we can, if we adopt Robert's Rules of Order, then in that, it says that you are supposed to let everybody talk that wants to talk. Some boards do this. They'll have these things that they put out, and you go all the way around and make sure everybody has spoken what they want to say. And then if somebody else wants to talk again, you're just not supposed to talk two or three times before everybody has a chance to say what they want to say. You got ideas ready?
In my opinion, we're all adults, we would be able to do one. That's what it is right now. And if you get out of hand, you've got a hammer.
Well, just for tonight. Well, let's get rolling with this attorney thing. What are y'all thinking?
From my personal opinion, when they gave the presentation, I felt like, this is named Chris.
Chris McCarthy.
He gave the best presentation. Because you give the best presentation, I don't give you the best. And that's, that was, that's my recognition, since he did a lot about school law, and he, in the presentation, he spelled it all out, and he influenced me, that's.
Jan, do you want to speak about how many times you've used it, or what your opinion is about that?
So, just as superintendent, and I know that frequently, you guys as a board fact-check, or you may have things that come to your attention, and you want to ask the attorney. If you guys remember the initial conversation about an attorney, I said, I really would like to have someone that is very current and very familiar with other school districts, what other school districts are doing, what's the current law, or what's the current practices. I do think I've been in some training with Mr. Cagle and had some conversations, and we discussed three things that are probably very significant for schools that are very different for other businesses. A, personnel issues, because there's the law, and there's teacher tenure, and there's other things that normally, that if you're just in another job, if you are three calls, no shows, then you can terminate an employee, because Tennessee's an at-will state. But with teachers who have tenure, that is not exactly how that goes. So, that, and then another place I think that gets very sticky, special education. So, special education, personnel, and then I think in our situation, because we're under the eighty-one act, and our budget and finance department sit with the county. At some point, one of the previous directors elected to be around with our own in-house accountant and bookkeeper. Now, Gail has been great, we've never had any sort of sticky situation to come up, but I don't know that at some point, you might want to have someone that is very familiar with other schools, other school budgets and how they do them. So, that was why my request, early on, before we met any of them, was someone who was very well-versed in school law, and someone who could say, hey, why don't you try this particular district? Because that superintendent just dealt with that particular issue. And I won't have to call. I think I've spent a lot of time calling friends and other people to ask them, and I think sometimes it gets uncomfortable for them or for me, because I know that's the service that they charge for. And I'm asking as a favor, can you tell me about this particular issue? I don't know if Mr. Cagle might have something to add to that part of the discussion.
I can, I can personally say that, Madam Chair, that we represent about sixty school systems in Tennessee. Let me first of all say, I'm not advocating Chris McCarthy. Chris McCarthy's my law partner, in the Knoxville office, so let me make that disclosure right now. But school systems across the state tend to get in trouble exactly where, exactly where the superintendent has said. Number one, with personnel, there's an extraordinary set of rights for teachers, particularly tenure teachers, in the code, and most folks, most of the calls I get this time of year involve, how do you get tenure? And then toward the end of the year, it's how do you dismiss somebody who does have tenure? Special education, if you've never dealt in special education law, let me just say, that's a language into itself. It's a language into itself. You're, you're, we, the board doesn't have any hearings, in fact, your hearings you go through board training, that boards actually have very little to do with special education. The I P team at a school controls what happens to that child, and literally the budget for that child. So, school boards have very little to do with it. We think it's worthwhile for you to know about it, even though those issues don't get to you. And finally, I would add another double to that, that's constitutional issues. Such things as, can you have a Bible club at school? And what rights do students have when they walk into a school? You know, to have prayer meetings, or speech issues, or like the one we tried to use this week, does a student have a constitutional right not to wear a mask? And we tried that in Coffey County this week. So, you get into a lot of constitutional law issues in schools that they'll face in county government general, generally. And I would urge you to, you know, whoever you choose, you know, to choose the person who is conversant in those things, because you could have a special ed process hearing filed tomorrow. And folks, you're gonna have a trial on that thing in forty-five days. So, that's not on the job training. Special ed process hearing is filed tomorrow. The administrative law judge, once you have your initial conference, will schedule the hearing in forty-five days. And that sort of takes over the running of the school, so just be aware of that.
Can I say something here? I've looked at what our county attorney charges, and he, we've all, I think we were all emailed what he charges the county. It was, you know, an average of over eighty thousand a year. And then he also does the city, and I think it's thirty or thirty-five thousand, he gets there. My question is, I don't know, I think somebody in school law would save us money, in the long run, because if you call, they could give you an answer immediately. And if somebody doesn't know school law, they're gonna be charging you for their time that they're trying to find the information, I mean, I would think. So, I think it would probably be a smart thing financially to go with somebody that we can have on call. I don't think we ought to pay somebody a retainer every month, but just as needed. What do you all think?
He had, if I may, this attorney has many, many departments within the county, and we're just one. So, I don't, I think that's comparing apples to oranges, saying compare what he charged over there because of all the different departments. And as all these attorneys said, in the beginning, when they said, there's no one. And I think, I can't speak for Mr. Cagle behind me, but I dare say, he don't know all the law. No one knows all the law. They're gonna pick up the phone and call a, what was the guy from Rutherford County, where he was over there, said he has, somewhere he calls and checks. And I'd say that most law firms have someone they pay to research all the different various laws that's out there. But to compare county to this, I think that's comparing apples to oranges. And if you're, if you, you know, we weren't concerned about spending money before, now it seems like we're concerned about spending money for an attorney. My thoughts.
When I saw their numbers, I agreed, because I knew he does so many different departments, you know, so I didn't really consider, I mean, you know, hey, are we gonna be charged at eighty thousand dollars? Because he has, you know, the ambulance department, this department, the sheriff's department is a big hit, and.
Sheriff department.
Yeah. So, you know, that's why I earned. He was a part of that. It was hard to make his numbers coincide with others' numbers, because of so many big departments he has going on.
Yeah.
So, in the blue folder, there is a chart. And if we wanted, if there, if we wanted to do a comparison of the hours of rate or the fee schedule, I think each of them, their fee scanning is listed along with some of the numbers. And if there were going to be any separate additional fees.
When we get, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
When we get down to it, hopefully, we'll never get there. Hopefully, we'll never get to a suit, but as I think most attorneys say, a suit's gonna happen at some point. You can't avoid them, whether you're right, wrong, or indifferent. At that point in time, comparing these fees to down the road, what it might cost then, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, I think that's an apple oranges too. Because I may charge two hundred dollars an hour, John may charge three hundred dollars an hour, and he may be able to do his job in thirty minutes, while it may take me two hours to do my job.
I guess what I thought of, you know, Mr. Nelson has to look at so much of our stuff anyhow, and I thought, well, he don't even want a yearly contract. What if you did try him? Since he's already looking at everything, I mean, if we tried him for two or three months and said, hey, no, too expensive, hey, no, that's not the route we want to go. I mean, there was just different options I looked at. Yes, I thought McCarthy was good, Wheeler was good, Bennett, I mean, it would be hard, but, you know, I would, you know, after I got hung up and thinking over the weeks, I thought, well, he's looking at this, looking at this. You know, he looks at over half our stuff that they've seen over there. I don't know.
Well, see, he doesn't charge us, though, when he's looking over contracts and things. Go ahead, you know.
So, I want to just maybe clarify, because there are many things that you see in the billing that on the day-to-day operations, he looks at our contracts, he looks at things that go through our purchasing agent. But day-to-day things like media requests on FERFA, we had a personnel issue this week. So, probably, maybe once or twice a week, there are things that Mrs. Matthews took a look at that don't, that do not go to him. So, I just want to clarify that he's only looking at our purchasing things. He's not looking at all those day-to-day operation things that you want an attorney to look at. And even he suggested, hey, if you get ready to terminate someone, that's something we'd allow an attorney to look at, right?
Well, I mean, you all know, I'm a good friend of Jerome Nelson. We go back a long way. I think he's great, I think he's smart, I think he's on top of everything. And I don't think we'd go wrong with Jerome. But my concern is, is just the school things that come up with special ed, like you were talking about, the special ed, and the teacher tenure, and those kind of things, and just teacher beha, overall teacher behavior, you could, I've seen a lot of things that we've had to have attorneys with over the last five years, six years. So, I mean, it's gonna be, it'll be the pleasure of the board, how we hire somebody. Mark, you got an opinion?
This is not under contract, Greg, so if we hire somebody, we can make a change anytime we want.
Right, we're not gonna have.
On the yearly contracts, the others, I think they were contract.
Not, Chris, Chris McCarthy was not contract, we didn't, his was month to month.
As needed, typically, they bill us as needed. We don't have a contract, have we had one recently, Sandra?
Aren't the flat fees?
Well, now, we had one with Doris, though.
We had one with Doris. We had a contract, we did yearly contracts.
Yeah, and she, she was paid every month a certain amount, wasn't she?
No, she didn't have a, as we.
A retainer, I was thinking it was a retainer. Yeah.
Then we paid her about an hour or something.
Well, I know that Scott Bennett said that they'd like to charge yearly. I mean, it was like a, they wanted to do yearly, and I thought that was not a good idea. But I don't know why we could just, couldn't just say, we've got this person that we can call and pay if we want to, but if we don't need him, we don't use him. Now, I don't know why we can't use both of them personally.
So, so my question is, and this, this might be a question for Mr. Cagle. Is it, Mr. Cagle, is it odd if we used you for those three big topics that we know are education-related, and then Mr. Nelson still continued to cover contracts and other things, or what?
Yeah, give us your thoughts, Chuck.
So, again.
let me tell you the way I operate. And I've done this now for twenty-seven years, representing school boards in private colleges and universities. I don't charge a retain. If, if you don't, if, if, if I'm working for the Monroe County Board of Education and you don't call me in the month of July, you don't get a bill in August. So it's, 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 uh, we bill in tenths of hours, uh, at an hourly rate, and it's, it's actual time. It's actual time. So that's, that's the way we operate. And again, there have been months and months and months that, you know, with this superintendent, prior superintendents, that I haven't had to, I haven't had to work with you guys. Now, Sweetwater, different. They, they may call every day. And I represent Sweetwater City Schools, and they get a bill for the time that they actually use, they have it in tenths of hours. So I don't charge retainers. I don't have a contract with any school board. I have a letter of engagement. This is an at-will employee, an at-will engagement, and you can use me or not. And if, 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 uh, if we go through some irreconcilable differences, to use a lawyer term, and we decide we, you don't wanna work with me anymore, that's fine. I say thank you very much for the privilege of serving the Monroe County Board, and I, and I, I can do something else. And that's the way it is. And that's the way I found that school boards, I think, actually like to work is, I don't think, again, I don't think it's fair for you to spend money on lawyers if you don't need to spend for retainers, if they're not working for that money. So that's, that's just the way that I've always done it. There are lawyers who have annual retainers. There are lawyers who have a monthly retainer. Uh, I currently work with two or three school boards in the state where the county attorney does the work. That, I mean, he reads contracts, he reads purchase contracts for school buses, he reads purchase contracts for land, uh, you know, for, for computers, anybody, most anybody can read a financing agreement for a computer. Most any lawyer can do that. Uh, you, and you have to know what, what goes in a contract or not, and I'm sure the county attorney does. We include identification pauses and things like that in the contract. But when it comes to special ed, uh, again, that's the, that's, that's the special language. And, you know, they've, and, and if they don't know that you can, that you can only, most, most county attorneys don't know that you can only suspend a special education child without services for ten days per school year. If it goes to eleven, we're in trouble. Uh, so it's, it's, it's that, it's, it's those two or three things that I'm used for in those counties. They bought, they bought, in these counties, they bought land, built schools, and everything else. I've never gotten involved in it. So that's the way it works.
I'd like to see us just move on tonight, but, I mean, there was no sense in dragging it out. We just need to take a vote.
Well, it's a four, it's a good idea.
Come on, there, come on, there, don't be, we have to add, we have to add a program.
I'd like to say, Marsha, I'm like, Sharon, I think we need to get it down to two tonight. If not one, otherwise we're wasting time. Uh, you know, I can get it down to two, and I'll tell you why, on each one of them. You know, and special ed is one of the keys. And, and one of the guys there, he's been on all three sides of special ed deprocess hearing. And he's been the deprocess officer, hearing officer. He's been on the side of the Board of Education. He's been on the side of the school. And I think, when this, and this guy, same guy's been a school board member. If he, you know, if he can't be in consideration highly, there's, we're missing something.
You talking about Mr. Wheeler?
I'm talking about Mr. Wheeler. And two of the, two of the board, uh, lawyers we talked to complimented him on the way out. They know him, they know what he does, they know how good he is. Uh, I just, you know, I just think he's one of, one of, one of my top two. That's part of the reasons too. I think we ought to be able to get down to two.
If you get down to two, are you gonna have to come back?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. If we get down to two, and one, one of those has seven or eight votes, we'd rather get, try to get down to one.
Why can't we just get on down to one?
Why don't you all back then?
I don't know that we need to call them back in. I mean, I think we've heard them too good. Anybody else got, got?
Well, whoa, i- i- it, just a, a point of question. Uh, we've got four, four possibilities, correct? So what are we gonna do? Just secret ballot or vote, hand vote? I mean, what's a, what's a proper rule? I mean, we're not trying, we're not following, but we gotta vote, we gotta get them down some way. I mean, you, you don't wanna put one up, then the other one up, then the other one up. Why can't we just put them all up and say, hey, here's our four choices. Who do you want? And then go from that point on.
With the director, we can all just write it down and then Sandra put it on the board? Why can't we go that route?
Be quick. We just write it down, write your name down, give it to the chairman, let him read it off the thirty, and it's over with.
You have to, you have to sign, you have to be open. You'd have to sign it up.
Sign your name, put down who you want, then it's over with. Give, give what? You gotta have five votes or what?
You gotta have five votes.
Then it's over with. We heard your presentations.
Now, that's not against the rules of voting on a workshop. That's just getting it down to vote on.
We'll have to do it at a meeting.
At the meeting. So this is just getting it down to, so if it got down to two, then we, we'll make a decision at that point.
What we can do is, we could, everybody write down their choice. And the top two vote getters, we could say, okay, we're gonna vote on the next board meeting, I guess.
That's fair, that sounds fair.
Freddie, you're being on squad.
He's taking it on him.
Joe, you can on this board alone. Cam, what do you think?
Uh.
You think that's a good idea?
Just narrow it down to two. Are we gonna vote tonight on one or just narrow it down to two?
Well, I think you should, it's two.
Yeah, just, it's just vote, the, the top two vote getters, then move on to the, uh, board meeting then. Cause we can do one, we can do no more.
You wanna get the board meeting moved some way?
Well, Chuck.
Well, the board meeting, yeah, we can, sure.
Chuck, can you throw your name in the hat? Two, I mean.
Not at this point, cause we, we're down to four.
Yeah, we're down to four. And I guess not at this point, cause he's...
And then put his name in the hat, so a lot of them...
Right, I mean, it would keep voting.
Exactly. That's why I said, why didn't you put your name in our hat?
Well, again, uh, my understanding of the, of the request of the board was if you wanted somebody local. And folks, when it's all said and done, and played all candor, I live two hundred miles from here. Now, Zoom is good and, and long distance is good, uh, but I have to honor the wishes of the board, uh, when you said that you wanted somebody local. Plus the fact that, that, you know, there's, you know, my appointment may not be done here. If you have an insurance, an insurance appointment where somebody is, where your insurance, your insurance company gets to choose the lawyer, I may get chosen, I may get chosen there. So it's, uh, no, I'm not, I'm not telling you to come out, but it's, again, I honor the wishes of the board, but if you said that you folks wanted somebody local, I think you could get...
I think that was kind of what we talked about. And I guess Martin's pretty local too, isn't he?
I don't, I don't recall anything about, uh, about being local, cause we had Mr. Wheeler all the way from Galatin, uh, I believe.
I mean, I know who the top man, I think he said. I think, did we say local at one point?
Yeah, you want to vote, but local.
Local, I wanted to go with local first before we extended, expanded it out. I think, I think, I think it's a smack of disrespect when we want these people as tax dollars, but we didn't even include them in there to begin with. At least give all our local people a shot and then go out outside of town. That was my point before you advertised in the paper.
I'm always for the home board.
I'm, 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 I'm for that first, and then you go out, much like the insurance. I felt like we had to give Mr. Pennington a shot and then go out. So that's our local tax dollars. Anyway, what, what are we gonna do? We're gonna vote, uh, put down our top two choices? Is that what we're gonna do?
I don't know why we can't just get down to one and make them like that.
And my, mine is, my suggestion was two. Do I have a second on that?
I'll say it, yeah.
Okay, we got a second.
You can't second, you can't, we can't do that during this workshop.
We're just, we're not voting on who it is.
We're all along too. We ain't gonna vote on it.
We're not gonna vote. We're just gonna get down to who you think it is. So I may not even need a, a first and a second. I don't know.
Oh, you're willing to just have who's our top?
Top two are. That's what John had talked about right there, and I thought, I think that's fair, unless there's disagreements to it.
Ain't nothing on this.
No, not this.
Chris, is, is this marked somewhere now by invisibility?
No, I knew you were gonna ask that.
Brad, Brad, as you say you do.
Don.
Yes?
I'll tell you if it's me, what local attorney said about the process.
Well, one told me, well, I'll tell you what, one local on the older one told me.
Yeah, probably the same thing I got.
Wasn't happy.
No, I wouldn't be.
Wasn't happy about what?
Uh, just inside.
Oh.
About the process. All right, we, we, we putting one on each piece of paper? Chris, is that what we're doing?
I just said you two, and what you did in the...
I just tore mine off.
Oh.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll put that on the consent agenda when we get to our board meeting. If anybody else wanna drop it off the log.
Did you say we had to sign it?
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't miss that in the workshop.
We're gonna put this on the board meeting.
It don't discount if we misspell it, does it?
No, we can't do it about that.
Y'all, if we do it.
You gonna throw it out? Can I make mine in a, can I make mine an airplane slide in there?
Your dog, he pulled a mine airplane.
I can make a good bomb. I never could make them jigs very good. Let me, let me look and see, let me look and make sure I spell his name right.
Mine's gonna be here, I think.
I think I got it, but you know, I'll look at it.
So put like the one and two, is that what y'all are doing?
I just wrote two names for them. I mean, I guess...
Oh, we had what, two names picked?
Yeah, you picked two.
They're not picking.
Two names.
Wed, am I gonna come up here and sign that for you?
I was, I was looking, look, Sharon said.
He was ready to go with Sharon.
Think I got it right.
Have we got somebody in the first grade?
We, we take tally, we take tally these to the board meeting, all right? Are we gonna tally on that? That's, I mean...
So get down to the two?
Get it down to the two.
Yeah, that's the way we did it.
Vote again.
The director is there.
Of the workshop.
She worked there and down, but we wouldn't do no voting.
It's, that's why it was a workshop. I was thinking that we were gonna, I knew we couldn't vote on it.
No.
Jerome Nelson. And Chris McCarthy, and that is Joe Cagle. Jerome Nelson. And Robert Wheeler, and that is Sharon Frinman. Chris McCarthy. And Robert Wheeler. And that is Marcia Standridge. Jerome Nelson. Robert Wheeler, that's Dawn Lees. Chris McCarthy. Scott Bennett. And that is DeWitt Upson. Jerome Nelson. And Scott Bennett. That is Mark Eager. Robert Wheeler. And Scott Bennett. That is John Regal. Robert Wheeler. Chris McCarthy. That's Freddie Kelly. Chris McCarthy. Jerome Nelson. And that is, uh, Lauren Shubman.
We got it, we got it down to three.
Got it down to three.
We can do it again, because those, the vote for Bennett hasn't changed. That's gonna, numbers will change by three.
No, that's why we had to... I hate saying we can change here, but...
Just in case. Maybe you're gonna want to go on there.
It's the same as the first one, though.
John, did we want to, did I say it?
It was, it was the same as the first. I stand for recess. I haven't spent a few days since I've been to recess. Do you ever do it? Do you ever stay in for recess?
Those are class.
My first two years at, at South Shore Elementary, I don't think I got to go outside.
Robert Wheeler. That was all this. Chris McCarthy. Jerome Nelson. That's Lauren Shubman. Robert Wheeler. Chris McCarthy. John Regal. Jerome Nelson. Chris McCarthy. Joe Cagle. Robert Wheeler. Jerome Nelson. Sharon Frinman. Robert Wheeler. Chris McCarthy. Freddie Kelly. Jerome Nelson. Robert Wheeler. Mark Eager. Chris McCarthy. Jerome Nelson. Marcia Standridge. Chris McCarthy. Robert Wheeler. DeWitt Upson.
Are you serious? Are you serious?
Yeah, yeah, Christie, it's you. You should go appreciate.
Yeah, I'm gonna give a break.
Are you serious?
Well, you have to come, here's the face.
I think they probably have to go to one now, and then start a vote. You probably just have to go to one.
Yeah, I think we're gonna go to one.
Now, if we go to one vote, that don't mean that's who's getting it, right? We're still taking the top two.
We're, we're, this, this started out with two. We can't change it from two until we do that.
True. That's true.
You can get three down the road.
Write down one name.
Nobody changes, it's something about the sun. Are we just putting down one now?
Just one.
No, two. We started out with, we started out with...
But I mean, I just put the top two.
If we do one, we'll have another one, and then do another one separately, I think it'll break the tie.
Wait a minute, we started out picking two, so we can't, we gotta pick two and, till we change it.
We can still pick two, but two separate votes, you see?
Everybody turn the paper into two there, so you can save a tree.
See, Dawn is gonna do one, and get down to, that person will be one of our two, and then we do again, and who are getting the most of the last two?
I don't think, I think that's, I think that's, uh, not the same thing. I think that's, uh, splitting hairs.
Explain to him, Sharon.
So, everybody vote for one, and the top two vote getters would be the two people that make it to the agenda.
I, I'm gonna disagree, because we started this process, pick your top two. It's not being changed until, until it's changed.
Well, we're still gonna do top two. It's high.
We just did two, on number two there.
I understand that.
So we're gonna do it again, now six, six...
Somebody might change their mind. I don't know, unless someone wants to make a different, a different right there? A motion to change the system?
So would you like on three of them to be on the agenda, and then that way you just vote for one?
No, no, I don't wanna bring three guys back in. I like Mr. Wheeler. He talked to us. He didn't try to talk above us, didn't try to impress us. He told us what he could do for us and his experience, you know, and that's, to me... You know, and that's, to me, that, that said a lot, the way he presented himself to us. I felt comfortable with him, just liked to do it, and I would sit here and talk. I felt like that's the way he was with us. Uh, you know, he's tried, he said six teacher tenure cases, you know? Kewell just said, you know, that's, that's a big thing nowadays, along with special ed, you know? So I just, I just think he's a, he's a guy we can talk to.
Don, if we do one, and then we do our second vote separate, that's all we're doing. That's, it's just gonna, it's gonna break the tie, that's all it's gonna be. Like, put your top one that you would want, and then you go from there, then next.
Well, if you vote for one now, that's saying you're voting, is that, I mean. If you vote for one now, then that person's name is what people are gonna talk to, and the last two that are left.
Somebody might not vote for it, you're just gonna be, so you're gonna vote for your top person, so you can still have two top people.
Then the next time around, you vote your next.
You can vote for your second top person.
Those two names go to the actual agenda.
Right, right.
For, for an actual vote. Because this is not a vote for who you're gonna hire at all. This is just the narrowing it down.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the same thing. It is, you're just voting separately. Just voting for one.
Okay, let's just say that M- Nelson gets the most votes out of the three, when we just do one, then he automatically goes and be in our top two, and then the last, the last two that are left, we vote again on. Everybody votes again on those two, and it could tie again, I mean, it maybe could tie again, I don't know, but then whoever gets the top out of the two that are left, we'd have to, we'd have to. Does that make sense? Did y'all, you may have listened to the webinar on the sexual harassment the other day that Tennessee School Board, did you listen to it? Well, we got, we, it came out back, far back to the time for these different webinars that Tennessee School Board was doing, and Chris McCarty did that one just last week. I listened, it's an hour long, and I listened to it, and it was very informative of what, how the law has changed with Title IX. I mean, he didn't, I hadn't thought about how Title IX is not just keeping equal sports for girls and boys, but it goes into a lot of sexual harassment. That can be teacher to student, or student to student, or student to teacher.
Are you advocating for him in the middle of a vote?
Well, Robert, uh, he was advocating for Robert.
I just asked a question.
Well, I mean, I just.
You said it 'cause she's a woman, or what? I don't understand.
No.
Explain to her.
No. Or was you advocating right in the middle of a vote, John, last week, so make it, so make it easier?
He might not be advocating, but he did the same thing.
No, I always just wanted people to have heard that.
I would just, I just thought we needed some discussion, maybe you think it, I vote might change, and let's have some discussion on why you voted for so-and-so, and I think we do get a change of vote.
One thing I like about McCarty now, he sat up here and he said, it wasn't political, that's what I like, that's one of the things I like, but he said, it wouldn't be political. And that's what the school board is. School board is nonpartisan. We don't bring politics in, shouldn't. And that's, that's what, that was the tipping edge for McCarty. Plus, I've, I've heard him in seminars before.
Well, he was at a summer lawn, I, I kinda got hooked on him when he did some summer lawn stuff, so, I mean, I've listened to him a lot, so I made him vise on, 'cause I've heard him a lot.
That's perfectly all right. Everybody has their own vise.
Even you, Don?
Even me. I like, I like Nelson because way he presented, and he's involved with everything we had up front, and, and I like the guy, uh, the Wheeler. I thought he could talk to him, I thought you could talk to either one of them. I, I like Nelson, 'cause he's very businesslike. I like that. I think this is a very businesslike approach to which we need more of. When he, when he gets into that, and Wheeler's a guy you can talk to, so both those guys, I could've, I could've voted about that minute, as far as I was concerned.
He, he didn't answer my question when I said about conflict of interest. He, he asked me a question, I said, what, what do you think? And that, you know, that's one thing that kinda, you know, I asked him about that, he didn't answer it.
Can anybody say yes?
No, I think we'd be at, go ahead now.
Another thing too, I would encourage is to talk to your teachers, uh, because I had a Zoom call with our teachers, uh, and the teachers, uh, had a lot to say as well, uh, about some of their fears and concerns, because they listened and were avid, and they had, they had some good, good fears, the teachers union and, uh, even our focus groups with teachers had a lot of good things to say, uh, that I had not thought about. So I just wanted to add that, that it would be important to speak with the teachers, uh, because they have some opinions, strong opinions.
So if we get it down to two, that's what you're saying, right?
I would, I would suggest that you guys talk.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah. So are we, uh, anybody, anybody else got an opinion? Let's talk about these lawyers. What'd you like, what you didn't like? We've got none, there's all minutes.
There are concerns with the separation between, uh, county and school, uh, and, and the only reason I bring that up, I probably had fifteen teachers who called, and that was their concern. Now, there might be fifteen others that, that didn't call, but, but the fifteen that called, and the Zoom I had, that was their concern, is they just, they feel like sometimes teachers are put down the total, total power very low. And they have some concerns when we mix everything together. Um, I mean, just being transparent, the other thing, uh, several of them called because they said they had some concerns about merging some of the services with the county and the school district. And they had some concerns about merging of services, and they just felt like this was like a step in that particular direction, and they had some concerns about that as well, because they said they, they have problems as it is with the services and getting adequate services, and they felt like if we got bigger, then those services would probably not be available to them.
Well, I know they were talking one time outside, do our meetings, and I know that there are a lot of our maintenance workers.
I think it might help, maybe it would help to not, the board a little bit with the county commissioner, you know, I mean, because they spend lots of time, the board has downed the county commission in our meetings. I'm not throwing no names or nothing, and, and uniting is what we need with our county commission.
Well, it's not any more merging, it's not any more merging this than it is merging the police and the this, and this, and this. There's no more merging this and the rest of it. These are separate entities, and he works for separate entities, and so this is not merging making big, and I, I've heard comments saying that, uh, since he is also involved with most of our stuff, it just makes legal sense and business sense to go along with it, and as far as, uh, the concern about teachers, I guarantee you, uh, there's a lot of teachers that ain't happy, thinking they're being put on the bottom of the total pile, and I think they're all be at the top of pyramid myself.
I agree.
Students, teachers. Principals, all of us support, and I stand up to the bottom.
And I heard no negative phone calls about that either. I don't know why the teachers wouldn't call, knowing we were gonna vote on that.
I did, and I asked them. That was one of the things, I said, maybe y'all wanna reach out, um, and I can tomorrow send you guys the names and email addresses of the executive, uh, committee, uh, of the teachers union, because that's who was meeting with me, and that was who, uh, they were very vocal with me. I, I was taken aback, but, uh, I can share that with you guys, so maybe y'all could check in, and they can advocate and tell you what they said to me. I'm only repeating.
Yeah, they could email us, something.
If that was as great importance, as which I think it should be, that should be on the top of the agenda, not down here toward hiring the last four. That should've been very, at the very top of our concern, over our concern. That, their concern should've been put in the for, uh, uh, forefront, not now.
I haven't, I haven't had either teacher call me about that, so he's had, no, I've had.
Don, can we just vote for the top, our top pick, and then who gets the top two? Just go from there?
Go for it, whatever.
Well, can I, uh, uh, John, you think it would be hard for Robert Wheeler, he lives over in Middle Tennessee, good luck still, I mean, do you think that would be an issue?
He said it wouldn't be. Said he could be here every, every month if we needed him.
Well, Mr. Cagle also said that he had, he worked for how many different, sixty? Didn't you say sixty? I guarantee you, they all ain't next door to him. Ain't, excuse that word, ain't.
This may be a little bit far into it, but I, I may be a little confused here. I thought we were voting on an attorney for the special ed, uh, I thought we were kinda running everything through Nelson, contract wise and everything else. Is that not what we're voting on?
Yeah. Well, we, we, we just have an attorney, in case we need him.
No, we want one that can cover that special ed, 'cause that's really important, special ed.
So we're still gonna run all the contracting stuff through the camp?
They do anyway, they do anyway.
We have to, we have to.
So we're just voting on someone for the special ed, the tenure?
No, no, the school board.
The school board attorney for anything.
School board's attorney, yeah.
Anything. Anything.
But he ain't gonna, he ain't gonna percharge us for looking at a building contract, or a, a, requiring a roof board.
We don't normally send them to them anyway.
We don't normally send them to them anyway.
He looks at all our copy machine contracts, he looks at everything anyway through the county, that's.
Purchasing. So, those contracts, typically, we don't send those contracts to, I never send those to doors to review. Purchasing takes care of that, it's a function of the county, that's a service that we actually do get for, from the county, so this would be on those.
I don't think, I don't even, I don't even wanna change my vote, but that's what I thought we were voting.
Yes, yes.
Can I ask, uh, Mr. Cagle one question? Could, could you answer this for me, best you built it? What would be a conflict of interest with school board, or having a lawyer that, uh, or the county commission and the school board, is our vote? Is any conflict of interest, could it be, like, a teacher took and sued us or something like that, I mean?
A teacher would not sue county commission, teacher would sue the moral education superintendent of school. And if, uh, if there, if there arises a big difference between a budget and a budget matter, the county commission says, we're gonna appropriate this much, and give the school board this much money, and the school board says, we can't do, you know, we can't do that much money, we've gotta have more pennies than that in order to make our budget, and it gets, you get down to a draw on the both. And at, and at that point, there's arguably a conflict of interest between with the county attorney, 'cause we can't represent both sides in the debate. If the school board, uh, and I, I represented several years ago, Rutherford County Schools, uh, school board, when they sued the county commission over who has the right to build schools. And the county attorney had to completely back out of that, you know, I, that's, I didn't represent anybody. Uh, and it turns out, school board has the absolute right to build schools. Those, those situations are rare, uh, but they, but they do arise occasionally.
Right, okay, fine. That's, that's what I want Mr. Nelson to explain to you tonight, uh.
Are we gonna two on the paper, or?
School board attorney, not just the special ed.
A two total school board attorney.
Oh, wait.
Attorney. But, per se, he ain't gonna work at every little contract.
No, no.
Well, he never did, Dorsey never did either, other attorney.
Yeah, I'm, that's like I'm saying, I'm with Dorsey.
Hey, it's just, I've been on here twenty-some years now, I'm with Dorsey too. But things change.
So, how are we gonna, are we gonna do one or two?
Okay, I think the only way we can narrow it to two is if we do one vote, and then do another vote. The top vote getter, number one, we put her on that side as that, heart of her number two, and then we do it again from the two that are left, and that would get two, would it, would it not, if there's?
Well, won't they be two, 'cause say, say McCarty gets five, Melson gets three, and Wheeler gets one?
Yes.
That would be your top two, the five and the three.
If somebody changes from what they went.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get the top one, then you're gonna turn around and do it again of the other two, the slot.
That's what we're doing, okay.
Is that correct, Sharon? Is that correct, John?
No, we don't have to do it though.
I'm confused.
I just thought it'd be.
Whoever gets the most votes, then you, then he's gonna be number one, then you pick the, the other two, then you go through and pick out one of them, then that'll be the top two vote getters.
So, how many do we, how many do we vote on this time?
One.
Just one, that was three.
Okay.
Then whoever gets the most out of those three will be the first, then you'll take the other two and vote one, uh, between them, one.
Did I vote that?
John, you're confusing us.
No, that's Sharon, that's Sharon over, I'll pass that buck over to Sharon.
So, do we get some?
Paul, you were talking one right now.
I was talking.
I bet Big Sharon was right, I mean, but when you start explaining it, it's sound, right?
I, I'll say it on you.
Hey, I like you.
We need some paper. Yeah. I give you the open Mr. Trace.
I mean, I've got another one.
A young lady, yeah, probably gonna, we might be here all night.
Come here, Mr. Kirkland, sit down. You know, Mr. Cagle? It's Mr. Kirkland, I'm the county commissioner, Mr. Cagle.
At least I put my name on here.
Jerome Nelson, Miss Sharon Freeman. Jerome Nelson, Joe Cagle. Chris McCarty, Marsha Sandrich. Chris McCarty, DeWitt Upton. Jerome Nelson, Don Lees. Robert Wheeler, John Rangel. Jerome Nelson. No money, is that you? I'll just let you sign it, that's not an issue, I've only got two, like, thank you. Chris McCarty, Brady Kelly. And Chris McCarty, Lon Chu.
Well, we've got two.
We've got two. We don't have to vote anymore.
What about the people that voted for Nelson? His votes will go to somebody.
We said we'd.
They, they need to vote for.
He's gonna vote one more time, Marsha.
They need to vote for, now you need to vote for McCarty or Wheeler, but the.
You got the top.
Oh, we got tie.
We got tie.
All right, I said so am the Wheeler, I'll break the tie if you need me to right now.
You can, before it's on, son.
Well, it's, you know.
We'll vote on it, you wanna vote on it?
Well, it's, so, so.
Can he break the tie, can he change his right now, Chuck?
Well, that's vote over.
Right now, it's narrowing it down.
Or do it again.
Vote over.
But he took that one away, Wheeler would be out.
Save this time, oh.
It's already in.
Yeah, he's already out. But if he take, if he takes his things out from Wheeler, Wheeler won't get any votes, he won't be on anything.
He's already out.
He's already out, if you look at the file.
He can change his vote, and that's your attorney, everybody inside.
I talked to is Nelson and McCarty. We vote again, we vote for Mel- uh, Nelson and McCarty.
I mean, Wheeler's already out, obviously.
Well, I'd assume we're all gonna vote the same people, but John just gonna have to change his vote, so while I let John change it, unless someone else wanna change it.
Somebody else might need to change.
I'll get one.
You, you, you're gonna change, you're.
Well, if we, if we wanted to get it down to two, we've got two up here. Are y'all agreeing?
I agree, we've got to get him to the top two.
You said top two, I thought you said one, get down to one.
Well, I was, I was, okay, y'all should've made him a vote on one, but now we should know that we want.
We can get it down to one here, and we won't vote on it, on that one till we get into our meeting.
Correct.
Okay, John, if you wanna go ahead and say, if you wanna mark everyone off, and say who you'd go with, let's see, that's fine.
Keep my vote on Nelson.
So, are we gonna vote tonight for Nelson? Are we gonna vote for these two and think about it, get some teacher input?
If, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong here, were you correct, John? We said we was gonna get one, then we was gonna vote again for the second one, and take two forward. So, right now, we gotta vote between McCarty and Wheeler.
But he just took.
He's, he's gone, though.
He's gone.
No, no, as far, far, as far as I'm concerned, we're taking Nelson over to the, to which guy, that's the way to vote, boys.
Well, okay, let's, let's, we said when we started, we were gonna get two, and we were gonna ask for teacher input, and then at the next board meeting, we will choose our attorney, right?
We didn't decide on getting any teacher input, 'cause, uh, she said that, but I said we need to have that at the very top, and this'll lay the game, uh.
Well, then, I'll be going to get it now?
And Sharon kept saying to vote for one tonight.
Yeah, I mean, just go vote, be done with it tonight.
But he got a winner, he gonna do that, even though Wheeler didn't get any votes, there's two left. Whether he got any votes or not, there's two left. And if we said at the beginning, we was gonna get it to two, then you tell me how we're gonna get around that.
So, John, what you're saying is you wanted us to put on a piece of paper right now, between McCarty and Wheeler, is that what you're saying?
Between Wheeler and McCarty.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just repeating, this is what we said, wasn't it?
We could do that, I could do that.
I mean, if, if you wanna go with one, I'm good with it. If you wanna go with, uh, DeWitt says you wanna go with one, I'm good with that, too.
Hey, you got the votes, I mean.
So, you're letting me vote twice, Don?
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Can't argue that point.
Either I can't vote on this next one, or I take my back.
No, no, we all get to vote again, we all get to vote again. Everybody's getting to vote twice.
Between those two, okay.
Or go with one.
So, leave Wheeler up with one vote, right? And then, we're gonna vote between McCarty and Wheeler, right?
Well, Carter and Wheeler's only two on it, on that.
Freddie, I'm confused again.
That's the only two that's on there now.
Well, now, we had a tie.
Nelson got half five, if you leave Wheeler at that.
If you take, I mean, you're gonna, if you change, if, if Wheeler's, if Melson gets Wheeler's vote, then he doesn't have any votes at this point.
Right, if you leave Wheeler on the board, then Melson's got four, just same as McCarty.
Just same as McCarty.
It's tied.
I think you're gonna vote again, then.
That's just vote again, that's just vote again.
I, I, it's still, it's still, we, we didn't say you had to have X number of votes. We said we was gonna pick one, and then we was gonna pick another one from the other two. We didn't say anything about no votes, or one vote, or any vote, we said we was gonna vote again. Now, that's what the board said, if you wanna change that, then change it. We have Wheeler and McCarty left, 'cause Melson got the most. Have McCarty and Wheeler left, that's the two that the other guy got.
Well, they got no votes, hasn't.
Doesn't matter, he's left.
We voted the second time around. Mark, Mark and Melson.
Mark and Melson.
And we'll vote him.
Yeah, Mark out, Melson.
Top three out of four, and then when John changed his, but he's still in the top three.
So, that's.
He's still in the top three, he's still there, no ma- no matter if we had any votes or not.
So, you're saying we're gonna vote between McCarty and Wheeler?
McCarty and Wheeler, we gotta pick one of those two.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote that right now.
Okay, so, we're voting between those two.
Between those two. You see the similarities here? And those two are, and we are, and yeah, like you, I don't know about those two. And I have this, we're all badish.
Robert Wheeler, that was John Rangel. Chris McCarty, Marsha Sandrich. Chris McCarty, DeWitt Upton. Robert Wheeler, Sharon Freeman. Chris McCarty, Joe Cagle. Robert Wheeler, Mark Ingram. Chris McCarty, Brady Kelly. Robert Wheeler, Don Lees. And Chris McCarty, Lon Chu.
Ron broke the tie.
Wait, so I talked to her, Melson. And tonight, we'll put that on the agenda, that these are our two, that we're gonna, we've narrowed it down to our top two.
And do what with them?
Uh, special board.
Gonna vote, gonna vote a change?
I guess decide to me, if we wanna vote, or can we decide, we're gonna vote for one tonight.
Chairman.
But you'd like to help me here. I've never, I've never done, C- Cagle, help me.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, let me first of all remind you that, uh, even though these ballots were signed, and then the person who voted for them, uh, their name is announced, you need to keep these ballots. They're part of the public record of a public work session.
Right, they.
So, you cannot do away with those, and they become part of the public record for this meeting. Um, Chairman. I think, through all the talking and everything else, clearly Jerome had the most votes. I think it's important to board, that as much as we can be united, I'd like to see if somebody can bring a motion to our official board session, and we appoint Jerome as the board attorney. I just think we, we're not on the same page, and I'm eager to beat the vibe to go with this, it doesn't make any sense at all.
No, it makes a lot of sense, that's why I said it made any sense. Oh, we gotta take two names to the board meeting.
Well, then, tonight at the board meeting, we add this to our agenda, and somebody will make a motion to, uh, I mean, it's, it's, I'm fine, whatever the board wants to do. I agree with Lon, we need to try to get together on these things.
John, since you broke the tie, why don't you do, let me make that motion?
Yes, I will.
Do, uh.
Wheeler won't be on the ballot for a minute.
Work sessions, work sessions, public.
He, he's streaming it, I think.
That's a call, John. This is still a meeting, but it's a call meeting.
It's a workshop, but we're not.
This is a workshop, okay. 'Cause you can't vote, you can't vote now to do one, okay?
You can't take a funding vote.
Gotcha. That's a good point.
Why don't, why don't at this point, uh, we take a small break, we adjourn, have a smoke break, we don't need smoke. Uh, is that okay with you?
I'm gonna start smoking, give me cigarettes, I don't got none.
I don't think I smoke.
I don't, I don't smoke, 'cause I don't wanna smoke.
I'm on coffee, smoking one time, that's it. Talk me a whole pack of candy, I'm gonna smoke.